Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to call the Brookings County Commission meeting to order December 21st, 2021 with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you please stand? Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the Commission's agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody present? Hearing none, move on to item number four. Approval of the agenda, do I have motion to approve?
Second.
And motion in second. Any additions, corrections?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel request, approval of travel of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the Human Services report. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce? Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Burisma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, routine business, approval of the claims, do I have motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have motion in second, any comments? Hearing none, we call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Burisma?
Aye.
Pierce? Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B, department head reports. Brian, would you like to go first?
Morning.
Morning.
I know that there was a claim that you guys just approved, but I would like to touch on that a little bit. If you guys take a look at my report I handed out, I didn't get it in in time to Stacy, but the tires that I purchased were for our snowplow trucks and I outlined just what we have just to keep our trucks on the road. There's 180 tires. Just to keep our trucks on the road and the tires that we did put on, we bought approximately 56 drive tires. And the tires that I did put on were for the snowplow trucks and we are going to keep a couple sets on hand because of the looming pandemic here. Things are getting hard to get. We're having trouble getting snowplow cutting edges, managed to get a few sets. Tires are going to kind of get to be the same way. We had trucks that were sitting about half to quarter life left and I decided that we better put tires on for winter. And I, I know that the values are over the thresholds, but this is purchased off of a state NASPO value point agreement with the state of South Dakota, which we can purchase off of. So I guess, is there any questions on that? I've outlined what trucks they've went on, on the bills. They're all for the snowplow trucks.
Can you tell us how many snowplow trucks we've got?
We've got, well, technically 11 if we'd suit everything up. We, we keep two spare units on hand.
How many tires on them?
How many tires on them?
Are there, are there more than four on those trucks or?
Well, there's, if you look at my outline in my report, typically there's eight drive tires. Those two spare trucks would be, you know, they'd have, they'd have a total of 10 tires on them apiece.
So 10 apiece. I was curious when I looked at it and I didn't go look at the number. I thought I was going to have time and I didn't. Last year we did a big purchase.
Last year we didn't hardly purchase any tires.
Okay.
It was back in 2019 when we purchased the last time, so it's about two years.
About two years? And, and the tires that you bought that are the extra tires, when you say two sets, do you mean for?
If we have something, yeah, they're, they're all interchangeable. But if we would have an issue, we've got spare tires sitting in the shed to be able to put on. If we blow a tire.
Okay, but I'm, I'm not sure I understood. Is that a, a set for all 11 trucks or is that two, two extra trucks?
It's two extra trucks, but they're all the same tires. So if we do blow a tire, we can go to the shed, it's, they're already mounted up.
So we don't have 44 extra tires?
No, we've got, we've got 16.
And we're storing all of the extra tires inside then?
Mm-hmm.
That, those were my questions.
And the tires that did come off, like I said, were about half life and they'll go back on next summer and we can use the rest of the useful life out of them. So. Any questions on that? Aside from that, keep in mind, we got a bid opening next week and at 11 o'clock down rude in suit 210 on the second floor there for a used crawler excavator and a low boy trailer. I guess the bridge update, I can't really give one. I was down there. There was nobody around, but I, I tried reaching out to the state, but they're already kind of off on holiday and I, I haven't, I haven't reached out to them. I was out sick a couple of days last week, so sorry for no report on the bridge, but you'll have one at the next meeting. Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. I put a report in your thing and on on the one I put on your desk, let's flip it over to page two and the stuff since noon on the 15th when the report was due is my, my latest updates. I guess the biggest thing is the Aurora Fire Department. We did move the repeater to Volga, the county repeater. We had Sioux Falls Solutions or Two Way Radio come up and reprogram all the radios in Elkton. So they've got all the, all the channels in Brookings County, but they're still having, according to the fire chief, major communications issues. So I'm afraid what we're, the only way we're going to be able to ensure that Aurora has enough community, the, the proper coverage is to put a repeater in the, in the Aurora. That'd be our final repeater and we'll have full coverage in the county. There's no place in the county that would not have, have coverage if we do that. And obviously it's not going to be done in, in this, this year, but I wanted the county commission's thoughts. I would, would like to in 2022, go ahead and start the process of putting a, putting a repeater on the Aurora Fire, Aurora Water Tower for coverage in that area.
Is the city okay with the putting on?
Yeah, the, the mayor has been in contact with me over the communications issues. There is a major communications issue in Aurora. I've been contacted by the mayor and a couple of city councilmen and the fire. I had three calls on December 16th. Every time they get a call, they call me and let me know that they're not getting the calls. So I mean, it's, it's getting to the point where I, I feel comfortable that there is a problem there and we can, we know how to fix the problem.
And roughly, what do you think that'll cost?
About $24,000. Our last one was 22.5 when we moved it over to Volga. So I would anticipate a couple more dollars with inflation.
So that's not in your budget for next year?
That is not in my budget for next year.
And so, I mean, I think we need a repeater. So how, how do we?
Well, I think what happens is we wait and typically what we would do is I'll come back in, in January and get permission, official permission from you guys and put down that we need one. You guys will give me the permission to do it and then at the end of the year, if I don't have enough money in my budget to cover it, then we have to supplement the budget. But Ms. Stephenson knows more about the process than that.
I think you'd be looking at contingency, moving contingency from general fund to emergency management fund at the, at year end next year for that, to cover that cost. But what we can watch his budget as the year goes on and, and if it's fine, it's fine. But if it needs it, then we watch it and supplement or give contingency at year end.
Because I, I do have an emergency line, which I've been using quite heavily with the COVID-19 response and, and stuff like that. But if there's money, obviously we use that money for something like this, but we, it's just, I wanted to be transparent and let the commission know what's going on. So all of a sudden, next year, we don't have a surprise this time.
Would we be?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is that something that ARPA funds would? Could be used for, that's a one-time expense?
I have been informed, at least in Texas, they are using it for communications because there is a first responders element, which is medical for like COVID, if, if they get the COVID call. So that, that would be a question probably to ask the person that we, we've hired. We might be able to get all the repeaters that we've done covered. I, I don't know about that or radios and stuff like that. But I've, I've been informed, at least when I go to the NACO meetings, if it's related to emergent, a medical response to COVID, it should be covered. And the other thing I did go down to, looks like I misspelled Moody County. Moody County's emergency manager, Terry Albers, 15-year emergency manager, he's retired. And they've got a new emergency manager, which I met. And Richard attended a court hearing yesterday. We've got the drainage situation. Banner's associate is, has got a doodle poll out to try to get a meeting scheduled probably for the first part of next year with the, with, with the townships and, and the two county commission representatives to try to have a meeting so we can meet again with the NRCS. That's the status on that one. And that's about it. Couple of bills came in, but we'll pay them off the 2022 cycle. Any questions?
Ms. Pierce?
Sorry, I have another question. I wasn't able to attend the PPCD, POD after-action meeting. Could you just give us a, a little summary of, of how that went?
By, by all means, we had basically 14 events throughout the year. The, the first one or two might've had a couple of small glitches and we, we saw what they were and we fixed them. And then near the end, it just works like a, like a, we basically didn't have any, any negatives. They said anything that happened in the beginning was lessons learned and we multiplied them and it worked good. The facility all worked good. We had no complaints. We, we, I received no complaints at all throughout the whole year for all, in, any of them, so. Overall, the meeting went, went well and the PPCC are, are still in the, in the process of getting a nonprofit designation because the hospital wants it to be a standalone organization, not, not under the hospital, but other than that, that's all that happened. You're welcome. Thank you.
Weeden passed.
Good morning, all. Do you have it up on the screen? First of all, I went through and I revamped, I had some help, thank you, Ms. Burisma. I revamped the totals for the spring run and we'll just stay on spring run. For the townships, if you take a look in the bottom right-hand corner, we brought in so far $12,253.27 for the spring run. There is a few townships that have not paid yet. I'm still waiting. I've put in calls and I'm waiting. I anticipate receiving checks from them townships within the next week or two. But just an FYI, it shows you clear on the right-hand side up towards the top of the page. It shows you how many miles of grassland, excuse me, that we sprayed and it was 1152. How many miles of 240? We had 2,184 miles we sprayed of 240. And then if you look right directly down under the grassland, the cost of mile per grassland is about $4.70 per mile. And then if you look for the cost of 240 per mile, it's $2.12. And then if you look down under the cost per mile for grassland, it's .22 gallons per mile that we are spraying of grassland L. And also for the 240. On these, on these, this township paperwork, that's just to give you a gist, the idea of what we're actually doing. And it actually opened my eyes quite a bit. I also want to point out the gallons we used. You can see the units. I don't, it's, it's really hard to explain, but the units, ounces of 240 amine, we used two, 328.47 gallons of 240. And then I also totaled up the grassland L. If you go to the grassland L column, I totaled up how many gallons we used there, two of grassland L. And that's just for the townships. Is there any questions on that form?
And over time, we'll start to be able to see trends year over year as we do that.
Correct. And I did that essentially for the spring run. Did you want me to go through the fall run? Of both, because I gave you the fall run, same, same layout exactly. We have a should have brought my readers. It costed us a little more to spray for townships in the fall. And I think I'm, I want to say it's the weather. We had rain, we had no rain, super dry, everything dried up, weeds come up, we could spray more places. So in the fall run for the townships, we brought in $15,539.06. And essentially, same thing, miles of grassland, cost per mile, coverage per mile, gallons at the bottom again, same, same layout. And that's for the fall. Move on to the spring run. It costed us for the county roads. It costed us $63,567.17 to spray the county roads. And if you look down at the bottom, there's total costs for the labor, the truck, linear miles of ditch, how many ounces of 240 that we sprayed? It's the same layout. I see I've got 240 in there, okay, never mind. Grassland L, how many ounces we sprayed out? Cost of chemical to spray county roads was $46,102.73. And then a lot of that is because we use the grassland L. There was more grassland L applied. Go first, what we've done through the summer, we, it costed us $2,262.50. And then of course, the total is the $63,576.17. So that's for the spring run. 2021 county road fall run, fall roads. Same initial thing. I should point out on the spring roads, we spent 183 hours look, or spraying the county roads in the spring. Now in the fall, we spent less, less time, we had 89 hours. And that's, we were down to two people in the fall to spray county roads, so. Labor was 2,248, truck was 4,497.50. How many units or ounces we, we sprayed of 240 was 1752, or yes. And the cost of amine was 192.72. Look at the ounces of grassland we used, we used 75,464 ounces and 80 of grassland. So our cost of chemical for the grassland L was $24,903.38. Total for the fall run was $31,814.63. Essentially, it's the same, just numbers are changing. Any questions on the fall or spring and fall county roads? No. Townships, it's the same layout here too. I just gave this information to you. Do I have the fall or, do you have the fall or the spray up there? Spring up there? Let's do spring first. Like I said, township? Yeah, I, it's, it was in there backwards. We can go to the fall, that is fine with me. Fall spray run, we should be bringing in $15,447.56. Currently, we have $11,727.10. Like I said, I'm still waiting. There was one township that did, I received a letter in the mail yesterday and they did send a check, so that number will be a little up. I'm hoping by the next meeting, everybody has paid. So the cost, yeah, there isn't really a cost on these. These are, this is just to give you guys some information on townships, so. Okay, never mind, the numbers were similar. So for the spring spray, we, it costed us $12,253.27. We brought in total so far, the $11,497.89. Is there any questions on the townships?
That aren't participating, do their own.
I'm sorry, what's that?
The ones that aren't participating, do their own.
They do their own or they have somebody else spray? I'm working on getting out and talking to them townships and seeing, trying to find out if there's a happy medium. Can we do something they would like us to do? Do they have a certain chemical they want us to spray? Just questions is what I've got to ask them. And I'm working on that.
Any other questions?
I do have one more thing with our bids, the board and I, we had a meeting last Wednesday. We had a meeting and we talked about the bids. Our goal is to have the bids out for chemical and open them before our annual meeting so I can have prices for the townships, because I think that's some of the problem too. So I can have prices of how much it's going to cost them either per mile or how much the chemical's going to be. So we can be ready at the annual meeting. So we're going to open, we're going to send out bids earlier and open them earlier. Are you guys okay with that? So I think it makes more.
Do we have a date for the annual meeting already?
We do, February 14th. We do not have a schedule set in stone yet, but we're working. If the date is February 14th. And it'd be at the BCOAC, starting at 10 a.m.
I, I believe Commissioner Bartley and I will not be there and I'm going to guess Bob Hill won't be there since that's the NACO ledge conference, so.
I talked to him yesterday about that, so thank you. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Marty, you have a report?
Morning.
Morning.
Presently, we have 25 in jail, which is a whole number and so forth. Probably next January meeting, I might bring you a contract, or I will bring you a contract. Moody County's been asking me if, if, and he's been struggling for, for space because Lake County's been full and he's been going all over trying to find jail space. So it, and he, and Moody County's two or three, maybe four. So I, I don't think that's going to be a burden on us. You know, we still have to have the same amount of staff if I have 30 inmates or if I have 60 inmates. So I think I'll help Moody County out and so forth, so. And then does I have a, this office transition and so I'll, I'll bring you more statistics at, at the January meeting for, for December and so forth. Anyway, then a lot of positive things on the open house. Last week I also had 28 leadership Brookings participants come in and they were impressed with it. In fact, now they want, some of them have branched off what companies they come from, they want another tour. So I'm going to try to get some more in before we open up and so forth, so. And, and got some cards thanking, thanking us, the commission for staying with us and getting the facility, that it's, it's a nice facility. And so I think definitely, definitely was worth the wait and so forth. The only other thing I'd like you to consider is that I'd like to earmark my building fund money that, that set us, that's in my building fund. And I, I didn't pull any figures. I, I, they, I usually put 15,000 in that building fund for anything that comes up with the building and so forth. And so I'd like to earmark this year's along with next year's to remodel that upstairs, do some things in that upstairs when we vacate where work releases. Everything up there is 23 years old, 24 years old, so it needs, that carpet needs to taken out and so forth. So just something to consider. I'd like to remodel that for, for staff up there. I don't know who I'm going to move up there yet, but move the deputies or investigations and, and so forth, so. But it just needs basically a lot of cleaning up. So just something, something to think about. I do have to replace one motor on, on the side, on the, on the sheriff's side that's bad. It's other, got individual air handlers up on, on the roof and one motor's bad. It sounds like a freight train above the deputy's office, but it's ordered and stuff, it just hasn't come in yet. So that's about two grand. So that'll come out of the building fund. It'll come out of next year's building fund since bills had to be in, so. It's just something to think about that, so I could use, clean that up upstairs. There's a washer and dryer up there and over the years, that's leaked and it's, I don't think, it's not wrecked the floor, but it's definitely wrecked carpeting and it needs painting and so forth up there, so. Other than that, guys have been busy, we still have deer accidents. Had some domestic, you know, it's the holiday season, so domestics are kind of coming out too. And, and welfare checks have, have stayed busy too. Holiday season's just tough on families that have lost someone during this time, so. Any questions?
I wasn't aware that you have a separate building fund. How much money's in that?
Usually we put in detention building 15,000.
It's not a separate fund, it's the 301 fund and it's his expense line that he has for the sheriff detention center within that fund. So I'll have to take a look and see if there was anything spent this year, what will roll into fund balance? And then we would do a supplemental budget next year to pull that money out and put it back in that budget line, but it's in the 301. next year to pull that money out and put it back in that budget line, but it's in the three oh one fund, it's not a separate fund specifically for the sheriff, so.
Right, yeah, I should explain that, it's just, they designate X amount of dollars, so if I need repairs and stuff. Also, SDSU contacted me, and they're thinking about, they want to put pads, iPads in their cars for, like we have, for hooking up with the counselor out of Sioux Falls, so. Bart's working with them to get contacts and so forth, so. Anyway, thank you.
We do have a nine o'clock scheduled, Jenna Hatum, wait a second here, and we'll start that. It is nine o'clock. We have a public hearing in action to approve a retail on-off sale Wine Insider license for the Brookings Country Club. Motion approved.
So moved.
Motion is second. At this time, we'd like to open a public hearing. Anybody in favor of this would like to speak? Any proponents would like to speak? Any opponents would like to speak? Any opponents would like to speak? This time, I would like to close the public hearing. Is there any additional comments?
No additional comments, I guess, from us, other than what you've seen in your, as part of my staff report. The Brookings Country Club would like to apply for the Wine Insider license, similar to what Good Roots Farm and Gardens did last year. That type of license is a new license for the Brookings Country Club, and it's five hundred dollars, which all stays within the county. Let's see, can you scroll up real quick, Cece? I just did want to let you know that I, when I was reviewing this application, I forgot to write down the publication date. We did notice it in the papers, so I did fill out H in here, so it is complete in here, it just wasn't complete in your packet, but it was published on the ninth of December.
Any other comments? Any non-call, roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Porzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Back to finance officers' report.
Okay, so behind the scenes, is actually starting to work on the twenty twenty-two elections. We've got workshops and webinars lined up to make sure the elections continue to run smoothly for our county. And I've decided to have two gals train as backups for Jenna in the election spot. She hasn't had backup in the past, and I just think it would really benefit us to have a wider base in that position. So, good timing for us, there have been so many turnovers in the state, especially in the auditor's office, with elections being one of their main duties. They have decided to start a, kind of a start-from-scratch training. And so this is perfect time for our new people who are going to learn that position, basically, the whole office to pick up on little things. So we're excited that we can take advantage of that, and some of them will be by webinar, which is, I think, is a great benefit than paying hotel and travel expenses and all that. We've gone over job descriptions again with the office to try to clean up discrepancies, look for ways to streamline things. And that's part of where we came into having more people trained on the election process. We've identified different areas, and we're going to try to get all of them started in twenty twenty-two. It is kind of difficult in our office with two offices combined to make things gel and go how we want them to, but our goal is to get all the cross-training started this, this year. How long it will take to finish, I don't know, but we're going to at least get it started. Redistricting, the district lines for Brookings County, we are now in seven and eight for Brookings County. Small towns are still finalizing their ward lines, Brookings City is still working on their lines. So when those get done, we'll have new maps. GIS is always great to make maps if you're ever looking. And we'll still have the sixteen precincts. Voting, thought it was a good time, being we're getting busy with voting, to let the public know that they can come into our office to make changes, to find out information, but there's also an online place for them to do that. And so I've given you there the two websites. They can see where they've that kind of thing. And I really urge people, especially if they didn't vote in the last election, to make sure their address is up to date before they walk in to vote. With Pierce and Krogman, we did advertise a little bit about the kiosk that is out at Lewis Drug. I had that on the radio and in the papers. It's the Division of Motor Vehicles kiosk. And you can do, I know more than what is listed there now, update information, renew your driver's license, which would be really helpful. Vehicle registration, seller's permit. You can actually complete this process at any kiosk in the state, it does not have to be your own county. So if you're out in the hills and your tags are expired, you can find a kiosk and renew them. Questions for the kiosk really have to go to the state, as it is their machine. They decide whether to pull it, to put it, everything. And we also did put that on the county website, that information, and the voting information.
Can I stop you here a second? We do have a nine oh five, another public hearing, so.
I'm out of here.
I'll call you back. Nine oh five, public hearing in action, approved resolution number twenty-one dash fifty-three. Resolution, we have motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. This time, we'd like to open the public hearing. Any proponents would like to speak to this issue? Any proponents would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, any opponents? Any opponents like to speak? And now I'd like to close the public hearing. Is there any additional comments?
So what this is, we established a Fund four oh two this year to make the bond, the jail bond payments out of. Because that was established this year, it had no budget authority. The cash from, that we received from tax payments goes in there, but it had no budget authority to pay principal and interest out. So what, that's what this budget, this, what this supplemental budget resolution does is give that budget authority, that fund, to spend the money out of there.
Any questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Porzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have number C, nine, ten, four, H, Lifestyle Judging Team Update. Would you like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Ray Sizelinski, I was a part of the that traveled to Louisville and competed in the national contest. My other teammates included Cody Larson from Brookings, Emily Nold from Brookings, and Drew Peterson from Garrettson. We were fourteenth overall as a team, we were tenth in the sheep and goat division, and ninth in oral reasons. And we were on the road for about five days, stopping at previous, like, stops, like, for example, went to Rosenbaum, Hogs, to prepare ourselves for the contest. We also stopped at a sheep place in Kentucky. So your generous donations surely helped us with this trip, and we want to thank you for that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You're ready for next year already?
Actually, I, since I competed at the national contest, you're unable to compete at any contest below you. So honestly, I was fortunate enough, we won the state contest the year before, but they didn't have the national contest for, in Louisville, they had it at American Royal in Kansas City. So I technically got to go on two trips, but, so yeah, I'll just compete as an individual instead of a team.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering also. Lori, would you like to come back?
I do have a question on the kiosk before we move on to the next thing, if that's okay.
It's fine.
That tells you how much the kiosk in Brookings County is being used, do you know that?
We get a report as to how much money is our portion that comes out of the kiosk, yeah.
I would be interested for at least the next few months, just having an idea whether our publicity
Yeah, helped or not, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. On the kiosk again, now downstairs, we basically, in your office, if they use a credit card, they have an additional charge added to it for use of a credit card? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, does the kiosk charge a credit card charge?
So, I would assume so.
I don't know if it does or not, so. I mean, I'd want it to be equal.
Yeah, I would assume so.
Convenience fee, all right, thank you.
You mentioned the kiosk, you said we get our share. Can people from other counties renew theirs on there also?
They can come renew them there. Okay, yesterday, we had our annual tax sale. This year, we had seventeen people come and take place, seventeen investors, which is like a record number for us. It went really smoothly, they spent roughly two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and bought all but a thousand dollars worth of property. I think Brookings County sits really, really well in how low our number of unpaid taxes are. So, I do want to remind property owners that it does get serious when they don't pay their taxes at the point of three years, because these investors will begin proceedings on their property, and so it's important to heed our warnings. We send out several letters during the year, especially now, after these properties have been purchased by investors, the taxes purchased. I'll send out letters this week saying this happened, and try to get them paid up as soon as possible. So, we've been working with Dan's office to get the welfare lien process all running smoothly, that's kind of ongoing. Jumping things back and forth, but I think we're getting a rhythm to what we need to be doing. I wanted to mention, we did have a customer mention the lighting in our entryway being dim, and I know we've talked about that before. So that is something that maybe we want to double-check on, because it is pretty dim out there. And I did talk to Sean at one point about the cameras, because our old cameras, you could see the customers, you can't really see that now with that glass wall. So I did talk to him about moving the cameras or getting new cameras in that area, too. So that's kind of on my radar. And legislative audit is here today and tomorrow. If you have any questions for them, they'll be in the room next to us. They tell me they're finishing up, putting the final dots and crosses the T's and crush your fingers. That's all I got.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions if I might. Here, and it just seems like it's early to be talking about that, but are you seeing anything different in our polling places? Have you, have you looked at that, are we?
We kind of talked about it a little bit, but I don't think we foresee any changes this, this time around. We also kind of talked about our agreement contract with the city and the school with the elections. We're not making changes on it this year, but it might be something we want to visit before the next big election. So I think Jenna and I are going to talk on that and do a little research before we bring anything.
So at the last election, we cut out one, maybe two polling places because of the pandemic. Will we be everywhere this year, or are we going to do the smaller number?
It's hard to say, yeah, you're right, with the twenty twenty election, we did eliminate three polling places. We eliminated Arlington, and we eliminated Sinai, and we also eliminated Swiftel Center. And honestly, we, with the absentees, we had phenomenal voter turnout, so. We've discussed Arlington, the location in the city of Arlington, maybe getting rid of that one, but it's just hard to say. It's hard to know whether or not we're going to have poll workers, if people are willing to come back out and help with that, so it's just kind of up in the air yet. But we do anticipate having all eight, for sure. Sinai, Arlington, and Swiftel maybe are up in the air still.
And then the other question that I had, so this is our last meeting of this year, and your last financial report for this year. Maybe we have to wait until twenty-two to ask this, but looking at these reports and the process that we followed, do you have any comments on us transferring to cash basis from accrual?
So far, it's been fine. So far, we haven't had any problems. Like, like you said, we're just finishing up switching over to the year, so it will be interesting, and I would probably have more comments for you next month.
Item number C on our department heads is Finance Office Report, Be it noted items, Auditor's Account with the Treasurer, Payroll on Additive Totals, Highway Expense Report, Register of Deeds, Statement of Fees Collected. Item I is Action Approved Fourth Quarter Transfers from General Fund one oh one dash four dash nine one one dash four two nine four to Highway and Bridge Fund two oh one dash three dash three seven one zero 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 in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And item B is from General Fund one oh one dash four dash nine one one dash four two nine zero to Emergency Management Fund two two six dash three dash three seven one dash zero zero in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Do I have motion approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any comments?
These are just the routine quarterly transfers.
I have, I have a question about the transfer to highway.
Yep.
So what are they going to have left in fund balance at the end of the year, now that we're on cash basis? Are they going to be, have unused budget or not?
They will have unused budget, but when Lori and Jennifer and I sat down and looked at their cash, because this is transferring cash over, we were a little bit concerned with the cash amount that is in there, not so much the budget authority, it's two different things.
Right.
So we felt that we still needed to do this final quarter transfer to them for the cash.
So when we do this cash transfer of $750,000, and that would get done like this week, right? Something?
Yes, yes, yep, before the end of the year.
Right. And so at the end of the year, and the two, that'll go into the
Two oh one.
Two oh one fund. They'll have $750,000 of cash in the two oh one fund, and, and then that's just cash on hand for next year, is that?
Yes, yes. It can't get spent unless you give them the budget authority to spend it, though.
I guess what my question is, why are we transferring cash to the two oh one fund right now when, um, they won't, I think we've got that fully funded from budget monies next year? Did that make sense? This is kind of Commissioner Krogman's general question on this issue.
Right. So the fund balance that rolls, that rolls over at year end, rolls into fund balance, that's not cash. That's not cash on hand. So cash on hand, um, is a separate line item. And in looking at that, what we're going to need for cash in that fund next year for the continued projects that we have to supplement that didn't get spent this year, and then the projects that we have funded, you know, that we plan on doing in 2022, because the discussion was, we felt more comfortable if we transferred the cash now and did that.
So our fund balance, and I'm sorry, I know this is in the reports, then our fund balance at the end of this year, because it should be pretty similar to what, the claims we're doing today are out of fund balance, or are they not out of fund balance yet? What we're looking at in the report?
They're out of cash.
Okay, they're out of cash, okay?
I mean, you, you have the budget authority to spend it, and then that cash goes out.
Exactly. And so when we get to the end of, and it's the cash basis thing that's messing me up a little bit here, I'm just saying that. So when we get to the end of this year, whether it is fund balance or cash, where roughly, do you know where the highway department's going to be sitting? My, my problem is, is we've got quite a bit of fund balance in the highway department, and when we move that $750,000 over, then it's always in two oh one. We never have any authority to move it back. And is that a smart thing for us to do right now? I think you're saying you guys analyze that, but I'd like to know more about that.
So cash and fund balance are two different things. They're not the same thing. When you, any budget authority that you have, that you've given that fund, that you've budgeted for, that goes and spent, rolls into fund balance, that's not cash. Cash is revenues and these can, cash transfers that we've given it over, over the years. So any revenue that comes into the highway department, and then these, the cash transfer from general fund, that's cash. You have to have both budget and cash to make expenditures. You can have all the budget authority in the world. We could budget $100 million. If you don't have the cash, you can't do it. So in looking at what projects need to, that are already budgeted for in 2022, in addition to projects that will be supplemented, giving supplementary, supplementary budget to in 2022, things that didn't get spent this year, didn't get budget, or they were budgeted, didn't get spent. In, in looking at both of those things, I guess that's where we felt comfortable. The numbers, I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, um, in looking at it. But I know Lori and Jennifer and I sat down and we, we talked about that, because I said, let's look at that. Is this necessary? And looking at those two things, we thought, we felt it was necessary to do the transfer. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What's the $750,000?
Yes, plus there's additional dollars in 2022 budget, budgeted to transfer over as well. And we'll continue to watch that to see if those transfers are ever, if they're ever not needed, we won't do it. You know, I mean, we've, and I, we've, historically, we've done that in the past as well, where we just have left it alone and, and not transferred that out. So it's something that we do look at each time. But at this point, we felt, because of the things that went undone, basically, unpaid for at year end, this year, we wanted to move it over.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, regular business, action approved resolution number 21-54, a resolution setting the official pay plan for 2022. Do I have a motion approved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
So this just spells out, um, the number of FTEs, which positions, and then their pay grade, um, that each of those positions will be at in, for 2022. So if you kind of look at all of that by department, and then at the end of the resolution, there are those wage ranges. So you can kind of match up which grade is the pay grade, one, one through, um, what is it, one through 19, will match up with, um, the pay grade over here on this right-hand column. And then there's the number of FTEs. So this just spells out what we currently have, what we're planning to fund in 2022 for positions.
Just for reference, the conversations about pay plan alignment will be discussed and officially adopted in 2022 as a part of union negotiations and all of those things. And so those would take place in 2023, not 2022.
Yes.
Thank you for the comments. Can you now call the roll, please?
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved resolution number 21-55, per year 2021 contingency transfers. Do I have a motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Just that, that's the total we're going to transfer out of contingency?
Yes.
Wow.
It's amazing. I love cash basis. Two things to note, I think overall departments did a very, very good job in keeping their expenses down this year. The nice thing about going to cash basis is that this meeting, when you approve the claims today, that was it. That's the final end of 21 expenses. So it makes our job, Lori and Jennifer and I, when we sit down and look at year-end budget, it makes our job a lot easier, because we know we actually have that packet of claims. We know exactly what's coming out, so we know exactly where each budget is. We have to calculate a little bit additional for one more payroll that's coming out. But other than that, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, yes, it makes it very, very simple for us, so.
Do you have a feeling at this time, or, or have you guys looked at this? And maybe it was in the financial stuff, but I didn't, couldn't pick it out if it was. How much, if any, from various different departments will be rolling back into general fund, because they didn't spend down their, their budget, budgeted amount monies?
A, a total, is that what you're asking? I don't have, I don't have any idea, but there's
Will we talk about that sometime next year? It'd be interesting to know how much, if any, that we're over budgeting in any departments. I'd, I'd like to know that.
I usually do that as part of my annual report, is have that information by, by department, how much rolls over.
It'll be different with cash basis.
Yes, and this year is going to be different. Next year, it might look a little different, because, you know, we made that decision to go to cash basis. So next year, I don't know, it might be a little bit, maybe things will be a little bit closer. You know, this year, I think, was an anomaly, because we had, I think people were anticipating some payables, both on the salary side and just the expense side in general. So I think that's what helped make this such a low number this year. It'll probably get back to, um, being more routine, you know, or kind of what we're used to maybe seeing, have been seeing in the past, because, um, people will get adjusted to the cash basis. So during this transition time, this is, this is low, but.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved resolution number 21-56, a plat of Block One, Wells Edition in the southwest quarter of Section Nine, Township 109 North, Range 49 West of the Fifth Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
This was approved by the County Planning Commission.
Yes, this was approved unanimously, um, by the Planning Commission at their last meeting.
Call the roll, please.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to transfer cash from Budget Line 101-4-211-4291 in the amount of $71,196.08 to Fund 759, the Brookings County Fire Trust Fund. I have motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
This is the amount, uh, basically of budget that they have at year end that we transfer over to that long-term, uh, fund in the form of cash for them. If you recall, um, the president of that association, Dave Jacobson, was in earlier this year and showed you that spreadsheet of every department that had, was kind of, this is their savings account, and they use that money then for kind of long-term or bigger purchases. So been in contact with them, you know, they had a couple more bills come out. So, uh, we'll be making sure that they know that this is the dollar amount that will be added to that long-term fund.
Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approved assignments of funds with the general, within the general fund. Action is a discussion on designations, motion.
So we, um, kind of looking at that, if we kind of skip ahead to my, my report, at the end, um, looking at the general fund surplus, I had noted for November, it looks really low. It was kind of a timing thing, you know, we unassigned a bunch of dollars. And so those unassignments, the cash had already gone out, but those assignments were still actually assigned at, at November month end. When I looked at that and actually took those into account, we were more at like 64% of, of general fund surplus with those assignments taken out. So doing some, um, math, uh, things and looking at some things to get us down below that 40% here for year end, you can, uh, if you, in my staff report again, I got away from that a little too quickly, I gave some, some suggestions about dollar amounts, um, to come out. If we assign those dollar amounts, um, that's approximately where we will be at, at year end. One thing to note, we have been assigning $30,000, and I think that's a minimum amount, because I think our estimate back in 2018 or 2019 was like about $115,000 for new radios for, for the Sheriff's Department. So we've been setting aside dollars in there. I think we need to do at least another $30,000 for, assign that into that, but that line item budget again. But otherwise, I offered some suggestions on things to assign those dollars to. You know, if we want, there's been discussion about, um, a new highway shop. Maybe some additional dollars for the jail expansion. I think we're okay, but it probably wouldn't hurt if we maybe did a little more just to make sure that we are covered there. You know, the biggest part of the project is just about complete with the new addition, then it's just the remodel that's left. We've discussed, some Merritt Avenue has been in there. I know we've talked about security upgrades at the courthouse. You know, we kind of thought about tying that into the jail project. That dollar figure just was, came in just a little too high. I think we can do some other things there. So that's an opportunity to maybe set aside some dollars. And then, you know, 214th, we've talked about that over, over the last several years, we've been talking about that. So I guess those were just some of the, the, um, ideas that popped to the forefront of my mind when we were talking about assigning dollars. So I'll let you discuss amongst yourselves what you, you think. But again, I'd feel comfortable within that, between six and six and a half million to get us below that 40%.
I'd like to add an, another item on, onto that for us when we go through this list to talk about, is we've got some money set aside for beta, but we know it's not going to be enough.
Right, yeah.
Beta would be a, another thing to look at.
Do we also have the dollars for this building set aside based on our most recent joint powers conversation? For all of the technology and veneer project?
No, that would be something else as well.
Because we know that'll be coming here too.
Now, that would be, yeah, I mean, we can definitely assign it within the general fund.
It would need to be in 301?
Be a 30, I think you'd want to expense it at a 301, though. Just to keep, because it, those to me are building fund expenses, but it can definitely be assigned within, within this fund, if, if you're comfortable doing that as well.
And something that's not on that list, but maybe you made a, a choice not to include this in your report, was at the East Brookings Business, uh, Meeting, the issue of scholarships came up. And, and I'm, I'll talk a little bit about that in my report, but that might be something, I mean, maybe I'd talk about it now, but if, if we're going to go through the list. But, um, President Dunn made a request for the city and the county to consider, um, doing some scholarships for, uh, students in Brookings County to attend SDSU. And I think, um, Paul Brazino, the city is going to do that, I think. It was on their agenda, but I don't know how that came out. Sent some information that Stacy has that, uh, relates to that issue. I think what they're doing is what the proposal is. I don't know what they're going to decide to do. But the proposal was that they were going to set aside $500,000 to do $100,000 a year for five years, I think, if I recall that right.
I think I have some of that information. That was in my packet, too.
And if we have an interest in that, that might be something also that we would have, could assign some money for. If we had any interest in doing that.
Just to add on to that, um, I, I think what it would be is a scholarship from somebody in Brookings County to go to SDSU, but then also potential for somebody to work, possibly have some, uh, strings attached to work in, in Brookings and stuff like that, too. There's a, there's a possibility. I know Brookings Health is interested in that, too, because of the shortage of, of nurses. But I think that's what they're talking about, too. Marty's pointing at himself there, too, so.
I think they had very specific, um, they had specific degrees in mind for those funds, some of the high, high need, um, yeah.
And then again, I, I don't know what the specific parameters will be of working, how long, or that kind of stuff. But a lot of these, I think, are focused on keeping the students in Brookings after they graduate to continue to do that, so.
Yeah, I think there's something called the Dakota Build Scholarship, if I'm, Build Dakota Scholarship, where, um, I think that's a lot through like the tech schools, especially, um, the students get
Construction, nursing.
Yes, 100% funded, um, their education funded. The expectation then is that they stay in South Dakota and work for, I believe it's like three years following that. But, and a lot of times, that's even sponsored by a particular business that would then hire them out. So there are those types of things out there.
I, I can't remember from what Paul sent out, but what President Dunn said at the meeting was there was not going to be any strings attached from the city as requiring people to stay in Brookings County. He said that, but I haven't, I don't recall how they had theirs written when, when they sent over the, the draft of what they're looking at.
Again, that's just
Things to talk about.
Yeah, not installed or anything.
Whether we want to set some money aside to do something like that, the details could be worked out later.
I'm not sure that we need to set money aside in this particular action for that. I think there's a lot to flesh out in that whole process yet. And I think the Dakota Build Scholarship, the technical education part of it is not included in this request at all. And I think that that's something that we need to look at as a, the commission is, if we're going to fund one, do we not fund the other? I think workforce development is a multifaceted animal we have to attack. And I think a lot of it involves the technical education type things. of it involves the technical education type things, so I'd be more comfortable if we spend a little bit more time fleshing this out before we commit funds so that we know what we're going to commit to. And again, we don't know where ARPA funds are going to come to supplement things as we discuss this, as far as the, the jail, as far as security, as far as improvements at the courthouse. I mean, there's a lot of different things that are coming down the pipe here, and so I think somehow if we, we, I'm a little, I don't want a specific amount, if we wanted for specific projects, because we just haven't fleshed them out yet.
One of the positives of assigning in the, in the general fund is that we, we do have to assign money. We don't, we don't have a choice because we're over on our surplus, and if we assign, we can always unassign later if we decide to spend the money on something else.
I mean, like the beta, we have two hundred thousand in there, correct? And.
And we know we'll need at least another two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it makes sense to add another two hundred thousand to that.
Yeah, and those projects that we've already discussed and fleshed out, I don't have a problem with signing funds for those, that's, that's appropriate at this time. I just don't want to get into a wish list until we've had time to discuss them and flesh them out and make sure that's what we want to do. I mean, it took a while to get the Volga one in place, it took a while to get the twenty street interchange in place, it's going to take a while to get two fourteen in place if we decide to participate or do something there, so. It just, let's make sure we, we commit funds for what we have already discussed and we know we want to move forward on.
One thought I guess I had is the, is the highway. You know, the potential for a new highway and that expenditure, I don't think we're, I mean, we've talked a little bit about it, but if, if this grant goes through for beta, definitely going to be building and moving. And so that frees up our opportunity then to purchase that building and then do what we want to do. I think we've been putting Band-Aids on that, a lot of the stuff out there that, you know, I think we should, we have to assign almost six million, we could throw a couple million towards new highway shop, we could take a big chunk of that, but leave it in general fund or something like that, but.
Totally agree.
Then we can add to it as we start getting bids and we start getting designs, we can add to it, but I guess I would just throw that out there.
If we assign funds on the beta building that we're going to have to, we're going to buy that back from beta, do we have assigned funds for that already?
Two hundred thousand.
There's two hundred thousand, yeah.
Plus two hundred?
Yeah, so four hundred thousand is a ballpark. It has to be done by an appraisal, that's, Brenda had somebody come take a look at that and give her a ballpark appraisal, and there's a lot of strings attached to it because it was built by federal dollars, and they can't, we just can't turn around and say, you know, we're only going to pay you two hundred, or we're going to pay you more than the appraised value, you can't do that, we just have to appraise, and that's what we have to agree about.
Did she get it? Do we have an appraised value?
Uh, no, I know she's talking to an appraiser in town here, I'm not sure if that appraiser hasn't finished or not, but she is definitely working on it and has touched base. I just don't know when that's going to be done, if it's something very soon or if it's after the decision on the grant. We don't get to plan, you know, we're kind of, you know, out of, out of luck then.
So the two hundred thousand that we've set aside for beta, that's in the three oh one fund, right?
Yes.
And so if we're going to do an additional two hundred thousand, would, would we put that in the three oh one fund also?
For purposes of the, the surplus, I don't think you would want to, I think you'd want to leave it within the general fund for now.
Okay, so we'd start a new line for beta?
Yes.
Stacy, do you have a recollection of the cost that we were entertaining for security upgrades on the courthouse?
If Sean, if you're listening, you could come out, I think it was, come out from behind the magic curtain, I want to say it was between two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think. The lower, the lower amount was, I mean, I think we had some estimates coming higher than that, but I think if my memory serves me right, Sean, what does your memory serve you?
Well, the preliminary estimate from, if we were to go with the same company we did the jail with, was about four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand, yeah.
If we decided to go with another company, we would have to go through the bid process, but preliminary estimates do put it at that hundred and fif- a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, that's a, that's a big difference.
Huge difference.
Yep. Yeah, but that is numbers based on estimates from several months ago, prices have gone up, and I do believe he did give us a quote with all American-made devices. There are some concerns about Chinese-made devices, especially in federal buildings or for institutions that receive federal funding. So I, I believe we would be covered with the estimate he gave us. It would just be a, a price adjustment based on how availability and how prices have changed.
Still quite a ways away from the.
Well, yeah, so one of my questions is, I mean, we have, we have talked about Samara Avenue and the rough cost estimates of what that's going to end up being are well over two million dollars. So do we, do we designate a million dollars for that so that it's their Samara Avenue? And designate a million dollars towards two fourteen, designate four million dollars towards the highway shop with two hundred thousand for beta and three hundred thousand for security updates, that puts us at six and a half million dollars?
Did you say Volga two million?
Nope, one. I put four million dollars towards the highway shop.
One million. Four at the highway shop?
Cause we know that that's going to end up being somewhere in the four to eight, depending on whether we use steel or precast or what kind of materials, it, it could be more than that.
And the Samara Avenue, I mean, we don't, we're not sure, we're just hoping, we're hoping for grants, but.
Right.
A potential.
We have agreed upon with the city.
We have not, we have not.
I'm a little nervous saying, we said a million bucks, so we're paying a million, and they're going to turn around and say, well, you guys are paying a million, right?
You got a million.
That's what you said, that's what you set aside.
So would you rather do half a million and put five million towards the highway shop or something like that? Cause we, we know we're going to spend that much on a highway shop.
What'd you say for two fourteen?
A million. Cause I know, I mean, I'm guessing that's a three to five million dollar project too, isn't it?
Seven.
Two fourteen? Seven million, yeah, so.
You have three million in bridges.
We have to match or contribute.
Do you want to, can you run down those again, your?
Sure.
For?
So two hundred thousand for beta, two to three hundred thousand for the courthouse security, a million for two fourteen as match potentially? Some number, half a million to a million for Samara Avenue, or if some would prefer not to designate any of that until we've had cost sharing conversations, we can sure do that, and then the remainder to the highway shop.
And we have to do at least thirty thousand for radios.
Yep.
Have you spent that money?
No.
We haven't spent radio money yet, we're just still saving?
We're still saving, yeah. This would get us to ninety thousand dollars of saved money. Do you have that budgeted as an expense in twenty twenty-two? So then what we would do is a supplemental budget with the ninety thousand plus what he has budgeted for in twenty twenty-two to make the payment of the radios, so.
What, what I didn't hear, and just want to ask, were we looking at putting anything else aside for the detention center? Which was Stacy's suggestion.
Well, the only thing we looked in the future was for the, the roof after hopefully that the costs would, I mean, now we're, we're kind of patching it together, we're, we're adding into the existing part, and he said in the future, we need to basically do the, do that part, and we can't.
I don't remember the estimate on that, but it was a couple hundred thousand by the time we got done with everything.
Yeah, but he said the, hopefully the costs in that will come down in the next few years.
We'll see what we come out of there with at the detention center. I mean, we've got, I mean, when is the three oh one, there's detention center money there, when is that coming out? At two point four million? Three oh one?
That's already out. This is November's, I was trying to pull up December's, but that's already been spent. That's done and out, yeah. Yeah.
How about the nine point four out of general fund?
Six million of that has been spent, has been transferred over, so we have about three point four million left there.
I, I just think we should wait and see where we come out of there.
Yeah, it's fine, and we have other dollars set aside that if we absolutely need to unassign some things and re-figure, we can. So if we wanted to do six point six million, do you want to do like a total of six million in assignments, or would you feel more comfortable doing six and a half million in assignments? What's your, what's your goal?
Put us below the surplus.
Either of those would put us below.
Six sounds great. Five point five is the minimum we should do.
So if we do. Let me, let me math one more time.
Four, four million on the highway shop, a million on two fourteen.
So if we do one million on two fourteen, we do thirty thousand for radios, let's say we do three hundred thousand for courthouse security, another two hundred thousand for beta, and am I hearing five hundred thousand for Samara? Is that what you're more, more comfortable with?
Yep.
So if we do the three million or the, the six million, that would leave nine or three million, nine hundred seventy thousand dollars for the highway shop, so all, just shy of four million. The total six.
And all of those would stay assigned in the general fund except for the two hundred thousand for beta that would move to three oh one, so we have all that together.
Well, I think, I think we would leave it in general fund for now and worry about that transfer when that happens. I think we leave it right in general fund now, for now.
Is that because it's, I don't mind putting that, I'm just throwing this out, that two hundred thousand into the three, three oh one fund, because we can assign and reassign inside the three oh one fund, and we have one number for beta set aside then, so we can see what we're doing.
And I think we could look at that next year, I think we assign it within the general fund this year, we could look at if we need to move it over then into three oh one or where that fund balance is, if we could just assign some fund balance dollars in an additional two hundred thousand of fund balance within three oh one for that. But I think for this purpose, we just leave it right in general fund for now.
And Stacy, I think you tell us this every time, but I can't remember the answer, the restricted fund balance in the three oh one, that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, what is that again?
That is just fund balance, it's called restricted because it's restricted to the three oh one fund, yeah, that's why it's called restricted, but that, that in is just.
We don't have a plan for that.
No, no, and, and that's just your general, kind of like our general fund surplus, that would be your building fund surplus, but no, no specific plan for that, which is, which is fine.
What was your total again on the highway shop after you, you deducted?
Three million nine seven, nine hundred and seventy thousand.
Almost four, how about if we just make it four?
So then we will be at six million, thirty thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there any bridges that we need to save for? Cause road and bridge, we've got Big River, Sinai that we, there, but.
Those are already, have already come out as well.
So our road and bridge fund is fairly low, I would guess, two, almost two million? Is all that's in there, that's not really identified for anything, which maybe that's enough, maybe that's not, I don't know.
I don't know.
Cause we do one more bridge out of there, and we're down quite a bit.
Yeah, but we won't have the high-dollar bridges, I mean.
Yeah, so I was kind of wondering if we have.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't recall right off the top of my head where the project that Brian has, if, if we've, I know we've submitted a couple of grant applications, but we haven't heard anything back on those yet, so.
Couple of, there was a couple of fifty fifty.
Right, and we don't know yet on those, so that, that may be something that we determine once we hear back on those big grant applications, but we don't know yet.
Cause we used to have a pretty good amount in that road and bridge fund, and we whittled that down quite heavily, and now we have a pretty good chunk in general fund.
Right.
Which is, is fine, but you know, if we're going to continue to focus on road and bridges and keep doing that, that fund needs to have, you know, a decent balance in. So I'm not saying we just transfer it right away.
But we, what we have done is put that four point two million into highway projects in the general fund, so we've, we've got that additional.
We actually have closer to like that four point eight, because right above it is that highway projects for six fourteen, and then we have highway projects for four point two five as well, so we have, there is money in the general fund designated for highway projects if and when it's needed, could be transferred over as well, but right now it's just assigned within general fund.
So that economic development highway projects at four point two, that can be.
Anything, I don't think it's really earmarked for anything specific right now.
And we, I think we just made a decision to keep a little tighter control over that rather than transferring to two oh one where we then have no flexibility.
Correct. Okay, is there anything else on the list, or is this list as it exists?
And I think what we talked about as far as like this building with the veneer project, that's not a huge, huge dollar amount, I mean, we're talking seventy thousand, I think we have that within the, the three oh one fund now, and the, the security upgrades, or not the security, I'm sorry, the technology upgrades in this building, I think we were looking at that more for twenty twenty-three anyway, so.
So we need a motion for this?
Yes.
I will make a motion to assign funds as follows, thirty thousand dollars for radios, two hundred thousand dollars for beta, three hundred thousand dollars for courthouse security upgrades, five hundred thousand dollars for Samara Avenue, a million dollars for two hundred and fourteen, and four million dollars towards the highway shop.
We have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried. Item F, action approve a combined Brookings School District zero five dash one bond election and county election on the June twenty twenty-two primary date, and to share the expenses of the election in accordance with agreement numbers eighteen dash six six, so have motion approved.
So moved.
A motion second, comments?
No other really comments, other than the Brookings School District contacted our office, they are going to be having a bond election and would like to hold it in conjunction with the primary election in June, rather than their, typically their, their city school election is held in April, and so this would allow Brian and their team to get all the information that they need and, and yeah, ask to have it on the, on the June primary ballot. Our office has no objections to it and we recommend approval.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried. Item G, action declare items as surplus to sell or dispose of, have motion approved.
Second.
A motion in a second, any comments? I think it's pretty self-explanatory on the description. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried. Item H, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time correctional officer. Item H, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time correctional officer in the sheriff's office. Have motion approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action approve a hiring policy update. Do I have motion approve?
Second.
Have motion in a second. Comments?
This clear, kind of clears up um, specifically clears up when an employee is going to possibly transfer from one department to another, but it's kind of cleans up the, cleans up what that looks like.
No further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Commission Department Director's report.
Part of my report, the um, our V S O, Courtney Van for November that you can see there sixty-five cases or appointments that she had, only four of those were from out of county. So you see her numbers are, um, she keeps busy. There's a lot of traffic in and out of her office. Um, and then she's been having those outreach events. The coffee with the vets um, is taking place down at Cool Beans. She's doing that monthly. That, the, the most recent one was last week and um, I think she usually tries to have that about the mid, uh, middle of the month. So um, kind of watch for those. Kind of already did the general fund surplus analysis. Like I said, I included that information with my report. Um, looking ahead to December. That's why we just did the action that we did on the, on the um, on the assignments. There was the scholarship program information that I included with my staff report. Um, that's been discussed. I think, you know, if we want that, further discussion on that at maybe an upcoming meeting where it's a specific agenda item and you want to kind of vet what that might look like, if you do that at all, um, we can certainly do that. I think at the last meeting, there was some discussion or some questions about the highway budget um, particular. Had their um, goodness, how long is that? Let's see, here we go. So this shows their expense line. I think there was some question about the interchange project and how that was being um, being paid for. So you can see down here under capital, there's a specific line. Here's that two million that we, we put into that fund. And here is what we've been billed um, as of the time I printed this on the ninth. So about two hundred and twenty thousand um, is what we would have been billed so far, about over two million for that. Um, other than that, just some of the upcoming dates that I had on my report. Upcoming holidays that were closed, Brookings Day at the Capitol, January nineteenth. And other than that, um, want to wish you all a very merry Christmas and a happy new year because we, uh, as of now, we won't need to meet next week at all. So unless something really crazy comes up, I'll be reaching out. Knock on wood, but.
Don't ask Dustin if he has any.
Oh, and Dustin did provide a staff or a report too. I know I got that via email this morning. So I printed it out and that's, has been on your desk as well. So. From the B C O I C.
State's Attorney's Office report.
Yeah, I would just tell the commission, um, something of interest. Bob mentioned it a little. Sure, how many? Delaney Nosse, he owns the farm on the S curve, South Main, but that's been a nuisance issue for the last twenty years. Um, if you drive by there, it's a pretty significant eyesore. I know Bob's been on him since two thousand and three, since he started here. So yesterday, um, we had filed six nuisance violations against him. Uh, he was convicted of all six yesterday. So he's on a thirty day compliance order to clean that property up on the S curve. Um, and then if he doesn't clean up within thirty days, then we'll go to circuit court to uh, have the county clean it up. So, um, we did a good job of coordinating that with, with both Richard and Bob. Richard testified yesterday. So, um, kind of an unusual circumstance to bring a nuisance violation into court like that, uh, but it does sometimes happen. Um, so hopefully we can get that cleaned up. Um, but just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner reports and discussion.
On December eighth, uh, I attended, I think with of uh, Zoom luncheon with David Own for the update on what's coming up in the legislature. And that was, as always, he did a nice job and it was interesting. And on the ninth, went to our open house and I just have to tell Stacy and, and um, Sheriff what a great event that was, that you just did a wonderful job with that. And Commissioner Bartley gave many, many, many tours. So it was, it was really nice. That was just wonderful. And then on the thirteenth, I went to the East Brookings Business Meeting and I talked a little bit about the scholarship thing that came up and that's something that we can talk about in the future if we want to. Um, it was um, there was, there were questions and maybe uh, Commissioner Jensen's going to talk about that, about what we were doing on thirty-fourth avenue, what's going on with the interchange project and, and where we were at on two fourteen. So there's real interest from that group and in what the county's doing on um, highways and bridges over in, in that part of the county. On December sixteenth, I had a public affairs meeting and we set the dates for the legislative forums and I forgot to bring them and I'll send that to Stacy so that she can let all of you know. I think what we're doing, but Kelsey's in the process of tacking this down for sure. I think the first one is going to be in person here in this room. I think the second one's going to be by Zoom and the third one will be in person again. That's what we talked about. Um, and she's kind of getting all of that, that tied down. And again, Stacy has it on our calendar, but uh, January nineteenth is Brookings Day at the legislature, if you're planning on coming. On, also on the sixteenth, I went out to the B C O A C to see the camels and to see Santa and it was a nice event and there were a lot of kids there and it was just fun. And Dustin does such a great job out there. We're lucky to have him. And uh, I'm working with Ben Kleinjohn, maybe I'm done working with him on a, on an easement project that I think is, I don't know if Dan wants to say anything about that. That's going to come from the state's attorney's office, um, in Argo Township, if I'm correct on the township. But more will be coming. We've found an area where um, we don't have our right of way tacked down and we're, we're working on that.
That's why we're lucky to have Ben.
That's it exactly.
Oh, it's a perfect type of project for him, but yeah, hopefully we can get a resolution on it.
And then um, yesterday I went to the um, the B E D C interview with one of the candidates and then to the social later in the day. And it was interesting. I've shared with Angie who will have our vote as our liaison to B E D C, what my thoughts were. I'm sorry I missed interviews on the twenty-third because I'm going to be gone for Christmas. That's my report.
Mr. Bartley.
Okay, that's. You'd think I'd know that by now. I attended the legislative luncheon on Zoom with David Owens. Uh, uh, again, always interesting. I think it went pretty well this year. Even though we didn't have a luncheon agreement, it always interesting to hear David's comments. On the ninth, we had the jail open house and again, uh, thank you Marty and, and Bart and Dave for putting on a great event. Thanks Stacy for the cider and the coffee and hosting on that end of it. Uh, we did have quite a few tours. Now I only actually led a couple of tours. And that was because Marty was talking too long. Between Marty and Bart, I can tell you their tours took twice as long as mine, but then they had twice as much information to impart to the public. And so it was appreciated. Both your tours and Bart's tours were much better than mine, but we did get a lot of people through the facility and I, I had a lot of compliments from people on the facility and, and the fact that they got to take a look at it before they became an inmate. Um, also attended the East Business Brookings Meeting, as Liana stated, and good discussions at that meeting about their thoughts for the future out there and their, their attendance was good. Uh, the fourteenth, the housing meeting, the, I attended one group for an hour and a half session and it was a good conversation around the table on different areas of housing and and needs. So hopefully everybody will finish, uh, I'll take Ryan's lead here, finish the inventory or the questionnaire online. It doesn't take that long to do. Uh, the sixteenth, I attended the, the jail meeting in the morning, which went well and uh, several discussions actually went a little longer than most of them do because we had a few things we had to talk about. The gift exchange on the sixteenth, thanks to Michelle, she's not here right now for organizing that. I did participate in that and I kind of figured out what my gift was because it looked like it was a six pack of bottles of some sort on the table. And I figured, you know, the only guy in the room, I'm going to get the six pack and that was a secret Santa. Uh, it was a lot of fun. Uh, everybody should participate in that next year. Uh, on the seventeenth, um, I went back to the jail for a tour with uh, Cornerstone as they uh, educated Bart and, and Dave on the system that Cornerstone has installed in there for the security. And all the circuit boards and fuses and where to look for issues and problems. And yeah, you look at it and it's a massive system and it looks extremely complicated, but they actually, as they went through each piece of the, the puzzle, so to speak, it was actually uh, pretty straightforward and easy to understand. And so they'll have some training coming up with the staff over there to run running that entire security system. And they answered a lot of my questions on how it functioned and why it functioned and why it was so expensive. Uh, the, the camera system outside is pretty impressive. Uh, the whole thing is pretty impressive to, to, to watch and uh, obviously Dave will be in charge with, with Bart's retirement and, and keeping that system up along with Sean's help and, and on our side. So uh, a lot of, a lot of wires in that building, miles of wires in that building. So I did that on the seventeenth. It was a couple hour tour of the, the security system. Uh, also yesterday, attended the interview for the executive director of B E D C. Uh, was a good one to have. And in conclusion, thanks Larry for taking the responsibility for chairmanship this year. You did a great job and uh, Angie, good luck. I'm looking forward to your leadership next year as chairman. And it's, it's a time consuming job. It takes a lot more responsibility than just being a commissioner. Uh, Larry did a great job and I'm looking forward to Angie doing a great job next year. That's my report.
Mr. Krugman.
Yeah. Um, December ninth, and uh, Game Fish and Parks held their, their their commission meeting in, in Brookings. And so they decided to do a tour of B C O A C. And Dustin asked if I want to come out and do that or with them. And I did and it turned out really well. Um, Secretary of GFMP was there. He had not seen the building before. A lot of the commissioners had not seen the building and it went really well. Um, they, they liked it. They had a lot of positive comments. There was probably fifteen people from GFMP there and stuff. And so, um, we talked about partnerships and collaborating and grants and we told them, you know, this isn't making money for us, you know, and we're funding this and they appreciated that because they want the doors to stay open and they then understood that we're putting our own money into this to keep this going. That uh, we appreciate any partnership that they have. And there were some good comments there that I think in the future Dustin's going to be reaching out to them too. They also want to expand. They have another person that they hired and in Brookings. And we don't, and they would like to be at the B C O A C with their other two employees, but we don't have the space directly as an office space. So trying to figure something out. Um, and threw stuff out of potential expansion, uh, of office space, storage space. Maybe they would help with that. And so I think we're going to start having those conversations after the first of the year of what that looks like what they're willing to do and what they'd like to do and stuff. And you know, they obviously have limits on their funds and what they can go for and what they can use it for with different types of, of stuff, but it was a very, very good meeting. I'm really glad we had it. I'm really glad we had the opportunity to get them in there because uh, I think it will hopefully when we're talking about those types of stuff, they, they have the facility in mind, they've seen it and they're so, I think we're pretty excited about that. So um, also went to the jail open house, ribbon cutting on the ninth. A lot of people there. That was awesome. Uh, great to see. Excited to see that. So thank you for your work on that. Thirteenth, had a Brookings Health meeting, the year end meeting there and uh, they are in COVID, you know, their beds are filling up and there's just not as many beds available in Sioux Falls. And so they're, you know, keeping more people here. Um, and as numbers rise and stuff, and so they are, uh, they were finishing up the year end on that. Um, nothing major to uh, to report on that. On the fourteenth, we had our quarterly strategic planning meeting and that was Commissioner Jensen and I attended that. We had the mayor and, and uh, Paul Bizino was there. Uh, we had President Dunn, we had Steve Myers from Utilities. We had um, Dr. Willert from the school plus two, uh, school board members were there. Uh, we had Tim Reed, Larry Tiedemann, VJ Smith were there. So we all just kind of did our talks around and had really good conversation. You know, a lot of the stuff we talked about is going to be state level stuff with money there and what's going to happen. And so um, yeah, that was, it's, it's always a good time to be able to talk uh, and collaborate around what's going on and try to work together using our funds. That talked about too, because city has, you know, here's money we do too. And obviously the state does too. Find ways to be able to use that money to the best of our abilities and stuff too. So Larry could talk if I missed anything on that one. Um, fifteenth, um, Growth Partnership had a building update meeting uh, out there at the Research Park of the poet building that's going on there. Uh, the bids came in quite a bit higher. And so we're doing some cost cutting and uh, quite a bit, like cutting off two to three million dollars off the project. So that's what they're trying to accomplish right now. So we don't want to scale down the building, but we're cutting, we're leaving some open space and not finishing it off. Um, and more on the second floor than the main floor. But uh, we'll get it going and they're still going. Uh, we've got the puddings in and part of the stuff going on there. So it's, the weather's been helpful. Just need to get, get the funds or get that cost down a little bit. So we're working on that. And that was an update there. Um, and then on the twentieth, yesterday we had our B C O A C meeting. Uh, we finalized our schedule. We're going to end up doing seven meetings. We're going to do one in January and then from there, we're going to go every two months. We're going to skip a month until we get to, we'll do a November, excuse me, November and a December meeting. So we're going to end up doing seven of them. Um, and Dustin will still give us a monthly report. So he'll be able to, we'll be able to get that done. Um, we're going to still have some discussion whether we need an executive committee or not. Uh, we tabled that. So we're going to have some discussion if we need to do something like that. The other thing too is with open meeting laws, I'm not sure if you can have an executive committee or not. Um, that came up. And you know, but we thought you could have an executive committee to be able to be a little more nimble rather than having, calling a meeting every time something comes up. But um, so we're going to have some discussions on that in January, whether um, we want to change the bylaws for that. But that will also take approval of this commission if you change the bylaws. Think that's it. And uh, thank you to all. Happy new year and Merry Christmas.
Mr. Borzum.
The egg appreciation, we quit, but because it was a Tuesday, nobody remembered that happened. By everybody, it was interesting to get that many people back in a room together after missing last year. So um, it was a good evening. Um, and then the eighth, the pre legislative luncheon online with all of you. Um, December ninth, I had a meeting with Stacy and Kristen to kind of go through some of the pay plan alignment stuff that we're drafting in preparation for twenty twenty-three. Um, later that day was part of the jail open house and ribbon cutting and noticed everybody from correctional officers to deputies to administrators. It seemed like all hands on deck and it was really well done. So thanks Marty to you and your staff. Then um, there were several B E D C meetings scattered through here. The tenth was one of them. The fourteenth was part of the uh, one of the housing study sessions and our group um, talked a lot about senior housing and different housing types that are not currently serving the Brookings market or there's not enough of. So things like townhouses, condominiums, duplexes, acreages, all of those came up as, as ideas for. as, as ideas for creating more housing mobility in Brookings County. And so that was, um, a large chunk of our discussion. Um, and then on the 15th, had a, had a meeting with Stacy and some city staff related to, um, ARPA collaboration opportunities. Um, talking about various infrastructure projects that may or may not be coming up. Um, mental health related things. And so, um, just kind of threw ideas out on the table to see where folks were at in terms of where the city is planning to prioritize versus where the county is planning to prioritize and if there were opportunities to collaborate. So there will likely be further conversations as, as time goes on on that. Um, the 15th was also the kickoff for Naco High Performance Leadership Academy. Um, and so that was the kind of first little orientation. I'll keep you posted on how that goes so that everybody has an idea of how it goes. Um, the 15th, we had a BEDC board meeting and a lot of that was prep for interviews and things like that. Um, I missed the last half because there were three things scheduled at the same time, so. Um, and then the Friday, the 17th, got to come here in the morning and check out all the holiday office decorations and do a judging contest again. So congratulations to the Commission Department for winning. Um, winner, winner. Um, I dressed up as a dog. It was pretty entertaining. Um, so we had, we had a little bit of, um, an abundance of elf this year. Um, so there's all kinds of good stuff up on the third floor, the hot cocoa bar and treats and sweets galore that were not bribes, I promise. Um, and part of what I loved about seeing the Commission Department in particular this year, um, was that it was something very original that nobody else did. So it was Charlie Brown Christmas and so you had the entire cast of characters and really everybody participated. So that was fun. Um, and then yesterday was involved in the BEDC interview for the first candidate. Um, I thought it was a really well attended by the board members, the presentation in the afternoon and then the social in the evening. It seemed like it went better and better as the day went on. So, um, look forward to the second candidate later this week. Um, and if you've got feedback on those, there are surveys to fill out. So please do that so that the hiring committee has those comments. Um, and that will all come back to the board as well. Um, and then last night had a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board Meeting. And, uh, very excited to be able to present a set of, um, December, well, it was the November financials where billable services were higher than, um, staff costs for, I think, the second or third month in a row. And so it's, it's exciting to see them continue to succeed. The hard part is the demand for services just continues to outpace their ability to, to grow and, and keep up with the demand for services. So, um, continue to talk about creative solutions to provide additional office space and expand the staff in the interim. So that would be my report. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. On the 7th, uh, after at noon, that exciting for shooting sports, getting started and everything, uh, the, the shooting sports are, they're taking as many, uh, participants as they can. There's still needing volunteers. I believe last weekend they had, uh, some volunteer training for the, um, archery, uh, the BB gun, everything. They're just getting on board and getting started here after the first of the year. Uh, that evening, went out to the ag relation supper at the Swiftel. Uh, glad to see everybody there, as well attended by, um, the county staff and the ones that filled in. Bob and, and Marty and everybody that was attended. On the 8th, I had, I attended the Conservation District Meeting in the morning. Um, they're moving forward, uh, already, um, getting signed, sign up for people, getting stuff planted for next year. Uh, set, already set, taking orders for trees and, uh, um, I guess with what supplies they do have, they're, they're, um, ramping up for the year next year. On the 9th, um, had a PPC meeting, uh, basically wrapping up the whole year. And, uh, Bob gave a little, uh, talk earlier, but, uh, it was, uh, basically how well everything went after the first couple pods and that, uh, I think we're, we're ready, uh, if, if something arises again, we can, we can have a pod and not have any worries. It's, it worked very well and, uh, like to thank all the volunteers that, uh, volunteered to help it. That was, uh, the jail open house. Uh, I just like to echo what Angie said about all the staff that was there. Huge thank, thank you. Um, a lot of great comments from the public. Uh, it, it, you know, it meant a lot, uh, I mean, people that supported us who were there looking, uh, there's people that missed the, missed the tour that, God, when can I take it? When are you going to have another one? I says, oh, that, that was basically it. Uh, we won't have another one, but, uh, maybe when we get the offices done, we might be able to tour the offices. But, uh, the main, the main part of the jail will, uh, be unaccessible to them, so. On, uh, the 13th, um, East Brookings Business, uh, Meeting. Um, Leanne said, uh, just briefly gave an update of what the county was doing, uh, with our bridge, uh, Sinai Bridge. Um, our, uh, work on 34th Avenue, uh, possible work on, uh, 214th Street. You know, we're kind of getting a few things in line. If that would, uh, if that project would move forward, we'd be ready to go. So, um, it was a good meeting. Uh, it was great, a local contractor got the bid and, uh, they've already kind of started some of the construction out there, so. On the 14th, um, Strategic Planning Meeting, uh, Ryan gave a little bit of update. Uh, uh, what was interesting, uh, Superintendent Willert, uh, the challenges that the school districts are having with, uh, the COVID and, uh, behavioral problems and stuff, it's just, uh, kind of amazing. And, um, hopefully we can get through this and, uh, get, get our youth back on, online, I guess what it should say. Um, on the 15th, uh, had a weed meeting. Basically missed the, uh, we did a year review of everything. Um, uh, brought suggestions forward on, uh, bidding, moving the bidding process on the chemicals up just because of, uh, there's some availability issues on the spray. Uh, hopefully we can take advantage and maybe, maybe, um, acquire some spray before it's all gone. But, uh, there could be challenges with that and, uh, we're, we're, we want to make sure we know by the time we have that annual meeting so we can report that to the townships. On the 16th, uh, jail meeting, um, basically everything's going pretty good. Uh, still on task, I guess. We're, got a few things that we're waiting for, but, uh, still moving forward good. And, and like I said, Mike, uh, participated on Friday with, uh, guys that were going to train everybody on the security system. They said it was pretty basic, but it, uh, I'm sure it was fun to go there and see. Uh, yesterday in the morning, I, uh, participated with the interviews, uh, for the BEDC. And, uh, that's all I have. And I'd just like to thank you guys for, uh, giving me an opportunity to be the chairman. So Merry Christmas and, uh, next meeting, uh, I'll give you the, give you the gavel, so. Yeah. So, moving on, uh, item number 12, executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, Preventancy 1, personnel, do I have a motion to enter?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.